To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna start out with the oath of office for Dawn.
I, Dawn Seeperside.
I, Dawn Seeperside.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
Of the city of Elko New Market.
Of the city of Elko New Market.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any changes to the agenda?
Council note that they received a revised agenda that had added reports, report by the city engineer under the 2019 pavement rehabilitation feasibility report update.
Motion to approve the revised agenda?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Berg and councilmember Timmerman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have a recommend, uh, acknowledgement of Heather Vetter for, uh... She's resigned as a planning commissioner. Planning Commissioner Heather Vetter has resigned from the Elko New Market Planning Commission effective October 25, 2018. Heather was appointed to the Planning Commission on December 1st, 2011, serving the community for nearly eight years. Heather continued to grow in her position as a planning commissioner, demonstrating sound judgment and recommendations regarding land use matters and policies implemented through the zoning and subdivision ordinances. Through Heather's years of service or calm, steady approach, has contributed greatly to the sound recommendations by the Planning Commission to the city council. Heather's experience or calm demeanor and perspective will be missed. On behalf of the city council, we recognize Heather for her nearly eight years of service to the citizens of Elko New Market. And on a personal note, you were great when you were there and you were always had a calm voice, a calming voice and deliberations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we got tonight retirement recognition for Steve Mortensen. Steve started his career in law enforcement in October of 1989 as a police officer with the Lionel Lakes Police Department. After five years, he was promoted to a sergeant within that department. From there, he went on to the city of Redwood Falls as their Assistant Chief of Police. On October 11th of 2010, Steve came to work for us as our Chief of Police and Emergency Management Director. During his tenure with the city, Steve helped grow and mature the department in a number of ways. It was a very, it was a small department which consisted basically of Steve and at that time Officer Bell. Building the department, he helped improve the resident approval rating of the department from 83% to 98%. During his tenure, the city was ranked the safest city in the state of Minnesota and eighth safest city in the United States. Community policing programs in Elko New Market that were developed and enhanced during his tenure include 19 Night, which has a much higher level of participation than most other communities our size and even communities larger than ours. Shop with a Cop, which partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and has been extremely successful over the years. The Point of Impact Program, which is held up as an example to other communities who are seeking to implement or improve their programs, and numerous other community events. Steve has also served on the board for the Southern Valley Alliance for Battered Women, and he's also served as the past president for the Scott County Chiefs Police Association. In the year prior to Steve being hired as the Chief of Police, the community engaged in an important discussion regarding the value of having its own local police department. Out of that discussion came a vision for the type of policing that the community wanted, one that Steve implemented, that reflected the values of the community, was highly visible, and engaged with the community. Steve was instrumental in implementing that vision and cementing that culture into the department that we have today. As a result, my personal opinion is that that discussion from nearly a decade ago would be very different today.
On behalf of the mayor and city council, I would like to thank Steve for his dedicated service to the residents of Elko New Market and throughout the state of Minnesota for the past 29 years. Steve's professionalism, experience, personality will be missed by residents, council, staff, and community. Congratulations, Steve, on your retirement. We wish you the best of luck in your future. And all I can say is one of my most treasured possessions is a letter that you wrote to me 10 years ago after I purchased some equipment for the police department, and I still have that letter in my office at home on the wall. So it's, you've been a great part of this community for as long as you've been here. You will be missed.
Thank you.
Steve's tearing up Woodley.
I've seen a few guys like that. We know how I am.
If the council wasn't mine, very, very many are too. No, seriously, I started this little adventure back in 1989.
I don't want to miss what you said.
You do or don't?
I do.
She turned them off.
I said I don't. No, I didn't.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry again. No, I started this little adventure back in 1989. Was always my goal, something new chief. My rock is right there. It's, uh, kept me straight and narrow for the 29 years. I've been blessed. I've had a phenomenal career. In 2010, the city of Elko New Market fulfilled my dream and gave me the opportunity to become your police chief. It's been truly my honor and pleasure and privilege to serve as your police chief and emergency management director for the last eight years. But it's time for me to go. It's time for Kim and I to start our next chapter in life. I want the council and city staff to know that I leave you in good hands. We have great cops in this police department. They will carry on the mission, the vision, and the philosophy. There's no doubt in my mind. Moving forward, this police department will continue the approved rate that they have now. So with that, I thank each and every one of you up there has played a role in our success and in my success, and I will be forever grateful. So, thank you.
Can I just say one thing? I'm gonna really miss Kim.
I guess we've moved on, we're gonna move on to public comment. Is Commissioner Wolf here?
I am.
We'll let you go, Commissioner Wolf.
I don't know if you wanted to clear out whatever. Anyhow, follow that down. Follow that. Anyhow, mayor, council, everybody, town hall, Scott County Commissioner, just a couple things. The YMCA came over to New Market Township last Thursday night. Joe was there. They'd like to put a YMCA camp there, gay camp there on 220 acres near the, kind of near the town hall a little bit over there. It wasn't met with a lot of enthusiasm by the residents, so... But I don't know that they were prepared to, you know, present the, whatever they had that night properly, so I think they may take another run at it. So, look for that. And then our new building, you know, we're still on track to get that thing started here next year. I know you probably, you hear you shaking your head, but, um, Gary Shelton and I, you know, I've been cheerified of my 10 years, and I'm not a big fan of debt, but close your eye to Joe for a hundred years. I just are not, you know, so I want to be debt-free by 2040, so I want to set us on that path. And by us getting rid of some other buildings that we're leasing and getting everybody in house and not paying mileage and all that stuff, it will save us a lot of money, a lot of time for people. So, in the long run, it will save us money. Maybe not something else, but it will save us money. Today, I was at the canvassing board, and we did canvass the election from last week, and we had more absentee ballots this time than we'd ever had in our life. We had more voter turnout in a midterm election. We had 77% compared to four years ago, 56%. The voter turnout was enormous, which everybody knows, and most of it was due to, they figured down to groups were sending absentee ballot registrations right to people's houses with most of the information filled out, with your name, your address, and all that stuff filled out. All you gotta do is put on your social security number, your four digits of social security, and your driver's license, and you can send it and get an absentee ballot. So, they made it very easy for people to just mail in, get one, and mail it back. So it was, it was a big turnout, and that's, that's why they kinda wanted you to vote a certain way when they sent you one of those ballots, by the way. But that's, that's what happened in Buchanan in our sheriff's race. He won, and Mike Beard and John O'Leary won also in the council, and Ron Mossovar was unopposed for attorney. So, that's where we're at. That's all I have tonight. If you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don.
Any other public comments this evening? Going once? Twice? Three times? Public comment is closed. Changes to the consent agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion for the consent agenda or any items that anybody wants to pull or question?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. No public hearings? General business. Item A.
Mr. Mayor. So Sandy's pointing up, through our, we have a due process in place for people who have...
Hang on, can I make a suggestion before moving on to that? I know there are a number of people here for the next item on general business for the oath of office. Would it be possible to flip the two general business items?
For which?
Appointment of a planning commissioner. Item B.
Switch A and B?
Appointment.
Okay.
We can get a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, let's...
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda to flop?
Flop those two? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, item B first.
City council is being asked to appoint a new planning commissioner. We did have the retirement of our planning commission chair, Steve Thompson, who had served on the commission for a number of years. We had gone through a process to post for the position to receive applications. One of our top candidates was Melissa. She was recommended by the panel for appointment to, to the commission, so we're simply asking the council to make that appointment through the adoption, the resolution, and then Sandy could run the oath of office.
Need a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Congratulations.
Yeah, Sandy does the oath.
Sandy's got the oath.
Sandy's got to swear you in.
Do you have the oath?
Sandy does not have the oath.
Well, this is gonna be close enough. I solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States. Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
And the duties of the office.
Of the planning commissioner.
Of the planning commissioner.
Of the city of Elko New Market, Minnesota.
Of the city of Elko New Market, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
City council is being asked to review an appeal to a determination made by the utility appeals board related to a bill for Maho builders. In 2009, the council established an administrative appeals policy which allowed the city administrator that does need to make adjustments to the bills if it was determined that there's something erroneous in the bill, or there is a meter issue, or some other mistake. If the individual, however, disagreed with that determination or wanted to seek an adjustment was beyond the authority provided to staff, through that policy, they could appeal to the appeals board. That appeals board would hear the request and make, render a determination. There are some guidelines in place. A lot of the appeals are related to undue hardships associated with individuals, and they can make certain adjustments to the bills. If the individual is not satisfied with the determination of the board, they can, of course, appeal it to the city council, and that's what is occurring tonight. In August, the appeals board held, heard, appealed by, um, related to Maho builders, related to a lottery that occurred on property located in a farm development. Sharon Mertens did it on behalf, the appeal was submitted by Sharon Mertens on behalf of Maho builders along with the Farm Town Home Association. What they're requesting is that the water rate being used to calculate the water bill for the month of August, any amount of $7,054, the, that was associated with new sod installation of three new townhomes be adjusted. The administrative appeals board reviewed the issue. What they found is that there were no clerical errors in, in the billing. There was no indication that the meter was functioning improperly. There is no identifiable cost for the usage other than choice, excessive use of watering for irrigation of the sod. Review of the payment history is that payment history for the association has been good, and the account history would show that there was significant amount of water usage far beyond what you would normally see on piece property. The administrative appeals board made the determination to not provide any part of appeal. The, the use was, of the water was intentional. There was no errors in regards to the billing, and it was charged under the approved rate structure. The council recalled, however, that there was a discussion about providing for an alternate rate structure for new sod irrigation, but when the discussion came up about when it should be applied and whether it would apply retroactively, the council was very clear in its determination that it would become effective January 1st, and that it would not be applied retroactively. And as such, the appeals board made its determination accordingly. The Maho builders and the Farm Town Home Association are appealing that determination to the council, and so that's what we have before you tonight. Council could provide you the copy of the, the bill history associated with this particular account. You will note, Sandy, if you can fill it up a little quicker than I can. The usage that we're talking about for the month of August is...
507,000.
507,000. 507,000 gallons.
But they usually use around 12,000. The monthly course, 12,000.
Is that a realistic amount for three lawns?
It's not three lawns, it's a whole, it's all.
That irrigation meter serves 23 units, including the three new ones in question.
So were they watering all 23 units? We have no, no idea.
I suspect so, and I believe there was some of each. I think it would be almost impossible to put that much water on just three lots.
So it would be a reasonable assumption that what happened is they probably increased the irrigation cycle for their lawns, but as part of that process, they were watering the entire association at that increased level.
I talked to Sheri, but I think there was some of each, but maybe predominantly on the, the main focus, but I think there was some water applied to the other 20.
Yes, it's regular waters. The three were only watered at the amount to keep the sod alive.
What meeting was it? And if you recall that we just, that we said we wouldn't go retroactive?
September 27th.
September 27th?
Because at that time, we had still, I don't think, received, had received this request, but there were a number of other high usages that, a handful that had come in over the course of the summer that would, if they were able to appeal it, and so the council indicated no, we'd be making it effective for the upcoming watering season, effective the first of the year, but we were not gonna go retroactive this year. The council can change its mind, of course, but that was the determination that was made at the time.
Did...
Just so we, that was the reason it was turned down is because the council said that we weren't gonna go retroactive.
I just thought I read in here that they wouldn't, they couldn't take that consideration. I kinda forgot if we said no, or retroactive.
The other thing I mentioned on the phone to Sheri, there, we think that the actual unit should be 23 rather than 20, which would change the threshold, and that drops the bill from something a little north of 7,000 to something around 6,600. So, a little bit of a reduction, but not substantial. So administratively, will come down when that bill is corrected. But I think they're looking for additional relief.
Sheri, did you have something in mind for specifically? Your appeals letter was a little bit generalized. Were you looking for something specific, or you have to ask?
We would like to ask for the 247,000 that was above, or billed at the $19, if that could be billed at tier one.
Now, that would be below what our, even what our irrigation policy is, our, our new sod irrigation cap is.
Well, unintentional use caps it at tier two. We have different, we increased the thresholds in the new policy that would be effective after the year, the amount of watering to do according to different tiers. Those thresholds have been increased since the construction.
That's two full days of water usage for the whole community. Right now, we're pumping about 200,000 gallons a day. So, that's two, two and a half days of every bucket's consumption.
They must have had water running down the streets.
It was. It was running down the bike path. There, there was a lot of water.
I guess I don't even get to the point of whether... Do we, do we stick with the appeals board's decision or not? I think that's the first decision, and I think we have that old place to do a process, and, and I get that there was a major egregious there, maybe we'd want to overturn something, but I'd hate to lose the integrity of having that board to do their job that we expect them to do. So I guess I wouldn't even, I'm there. That's where I kinda stop and think they did a job, they analyzed it, and they made that decision.
The base, the basis was on the way, the direction from the council.
So it was within the pol, it was within policy and past determinations that council have made. I don't think the board would feel undercut in any way if the council decided to do something different than that determination we simply performed within the guidelines that we had.
That was the only decision within the guidelines that we could do.
Yep. And I guess if we take it a step further, I would just argue or say that, you know, I think going retro and, and I don't remember if it was clear direction or not, it doesn't specify in the minutes, but I'm sure we can listen to us have that discussion of how clear the direction was to not take retro. If that was the case, I mean, I don't think we go retro. I think that is the situation. You know, if we change the laws, some ordinance six months from now and it impacts me, I mean, I, I think it's hard for me to start, come back in six months and say, hey, you know, you changed this ordinance now, now it affects me, or it could potentially have affected me, so I want to get back something or, or benefit from it. I just don't think that's a good way of doing business because then we start looking backwards for a lot of different things, and it could get us into trouble.
Well, and, and my concern is, is obviously, that's a lot of usage. Did they not realize that they were flooding themselves out, and there was drainage on the street and in the sewer?
Over 23 lots, mathematically, if all the lots are roughly about a 6,000 square foot lawn, that's about an inch, a little over an inch a week on all three. So there may have been water running off in spots, perhaps just due to uneven sprinkling. A lawn would absorb that much. If it was focused on just the three lots, that's an inch and a half a day. That's like Hurricane Harvey over a month. So I suspect it was spread over more of the lots. And when you look at that bill over 23 lots, it's a lot smaller than 7,000. It's still, I mean, it's still a fair amount for each unit. But I, I don't think it was focused solely on the three lots. I think it may have been emphasized on those, they require more water, but I think the other lots were watered also.
It comes to 306 per house.
Which is not a lot for some heavier watering homes.
Right. I did a quick calculation for that equivalent amount of rainfall on a standard lot with about 10,000 square foot. That bill would have been $600 for a month, for a regular single-family home, for that same usage rate.
I guess I agree with the appeal or the administrative appeals board determination before I'm out.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was kinda all ready to argue a different way, but, I don't know. No, 'cause I, when I initially read it, I thought, well, I guess I read it under the impression that had they been able to consider these, the ability to go retroactive, then it would have been done. But if that was part of, part of the discussion already, then I'm not gonna argue with the board. I mean, there's not, if there's a captivating reason as to why we should, aside from this just really expensive, I'm not for it, but...
I don't know, I don't think we can undermine our board that we don't have any reason, or any sound defendable reason.
So, direction is to, there is no action to be taken?
Well, it would be a motion. It would be a motion to deny the...
Okay. Motion to deny the appeal? Somebody?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Motion passes.
And I did, I did tell you on the phone you'd have a chance to speak if you wanted to, and I saw, kind of jumping in too late, but I'm guessing you would be happy to listen if she had replied if you wanted to.
I would just like to say that, you know, at the time, when we did those three units, it did turn to 90 degrees, and all we were trying to do was keep the sod alive for those three units. And that sod is a very expensive amount, and we just had to keep it watered. And for a small little association like the Farm Town Home Association, a water bill of $7,500 is very hard for them to handle. So we are asking for any bit of... So we are asking for any bit of relief that we could get.
So you did say that there was some relief?
There will be a reduction by incorporating these three units into the whole, because it changes the threshold, you're buying more water at a lower price, it's not, you know, it's not a big change, but it's...
It'll be a few hundred dollars.
Yep. No, I'm sorry, but I think that's, you know, with, with what the council did in the past and decided that there wasn't, isn't much that can be done, if it had been next year?
Then it wouldn't have been a problem, because we'll have that modified rate.
Well, it would, it would have been modified, but it would have been probably, I think, would have been better.
Better.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on to item C.
Next item is the zoning ordinance amendment for definition B1 for the zoning district uses, this had come up on the set agenda at the last council meeting, council member Burgett had some questions, unfortunately Renee was out of town and wasn't at the meeting to be able to answer those questions, the council had continued the item until this council meeting to allow Josh and Renee to connect on that, the council had placed it on general business in the event that there was a need for discussion.
Did you get your questions answered, Josh?
Yeah, I created a lot of more work for Renee, perhaps, but, no, I, I mean, I think after the discussion and what the, the point of doing these things are, and the process or whatever, any other changes or questions, you know, could be addressed in a future thing, but, I don't know, I mean, I had all my answers, or questions answered to the, and I understand why we're doing things or not making certain changes or whatever, so.
What, what were the questions?
I mean, some of it was with the parking, which is kind of unrelated to what the public hearing process was, so then, did we do the right process to have that? Some of the other stuff was with the daycare facility, just recommended language changes, perhaps, and maybe there was one change with the individuals, so instead of just calling them students, individuals being served or whatever, because it's talking about an actual day treatment facility for individual disabilities, or adults or seniors or whatever, so just little things like that.
Yeah, there was a tweak made to a definition based on Josh's input, and it was a good point. And he was suggesting a, a change to parking requirements, but we didn't advertise any public hearing to change parking requirements, so it was just outside the scope of what we're evaluating.
I don't know if you have any further explanation, but the planning commission recently considered these changes, it's really an effort to simplify some zoning regulations, in particular, by allowing certain businesses to locate as a permitted use as opposed to a conditional use, and then simplify the previous very lengthy list of retail uses and just call them retail, and just kind of clean up that zoning district a little bit, our intention would be to clean up all of the zoning districts in time, but I felt this particular district was imminent, because we have a new retail center in this district, so if we had an office that wanted to move in there, I just wanted to get these changes processed, so.
Any other questions?
I guess the only other question I would have is, moving forward, you know, I think we've all said we'd like to go through the ordinances, you know, but we just don't have the luxury of time necessarily, but now that I've marked up a whole set of ordinances and with recommendations or ideas or thoughts or whatever, I mean, what is the best way to propose changes, knowing that it has to go through a somewhat lengthy process and?
Well, the, the reality is that Renee also has a whole bunch of markups in the book. There are a couple of different ways you can do it, you can say, we're going to redo the whole zoning ordinance, you can do a complete review of it, restate it, it's what we did the last couple of times, you're talking about a year to year and a half process to crank through it. You guys have seen how long it takes to amend individual sections of the ordinance, that I know, so that takes time from the commission, which they're there for, but it also places a significant burden on staff to be able to crank through that. Quite honestly, we don't have the bandwidth for that type of a comprehensive approach at the moment. So what we've been doing is, as items come up, and as time permits, we're kind of picking out this, either stuff that comes up at the moment that's imminent, or things that are obvious or a little more pressing or convenient to do at the time, so we are working through, but it's more of a piecemeal approach at the moment, if there's things that you as council people feel particularly important, and or urgent, you can forward those thoughts on to Renee, or you can bring in those thoughts at a council level and say, here's a section that we feel we need to do, and basically direct that work to the, to the commission.
Do I hear a motion on these, on ordinance number one seventy-nine?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for ordinance number one eighty?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those motions pass. Lady D?
The council is being asked to like postpone for planning commission vacancy for Heather's renovation. Normally this would just be like the consent agenda item, but we would like to have the council appoint selection committee, historically that has been a community development specialist or the city administrator, the chair of the planning commission, and a member of the council.
Being a member of the council is kind of, so, you want to see who wants to volunteer?
Yep.
I'll do it again. It was good last time, I'll do it again.
I'm not opposed.
If you're okay with that.
Okay.
So we'd be looking for a motion to appoint council member Timmerman, Renee, or myself, if she's unavailable, but she should be, and the planning commission chair, or there does he need?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay, we're on to reports.
First item is leading municipalities and metro cities policies, as you know, both of those organizations represent the city, both in providing support to our efforts, but also representing us with the Met Council and also up at the state legislature. Annually, they review their policies, which guide their activities through the year and their lobbying efforts on our behalf, and they prepare the draft policies that they'll be looking to adopt at the annual meeting for both organizations, which is just coming up here in November. In past years, the council has reviewed those and taken a position of to be neutral, support, or support with some exceptions, and then designated somebody to go to the meetings and basically vote on our behalf. So we're basically looking for the council to have that discussion and provide that direction.
I am willing to go, since I served on all the policy committee meetings, policy committees.
I like that idea.
I'm not for it.
Alright, that's good.
Did the council have any concerns with the draft policies that they would like Bob to express at the annual meeting?
I mean, as always, the, the one on the housing is just silly and ridiculous, but we don't need to battle it this time, we have a new chair of the metro cities, so I think we'll get some work done on it next year, so.
Okay, so I think just a, a motion to support the leading municipalities and metro cities policies, and appoint the mayor to represent the cities at the annual meeting would be appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Record financial report, SAC has already provided. Monthly superintendent report.
No.
Chief report.
Nothing to add unless there's any questions?
No, I didn't want to make, I mean, not that I didn't want to, I would have, I guess, and I stand by my comments, but, you know, I, I wanted to, you know, really just express to, the thanks, it's been, it's been awesome working with you, and, I mean, when I got into this, I didn't know a whole lot about our ci, I mean, I didn't know as much as I know now, and one of the biggest things that I am most proud of is our police department, and the team that you've worked with, led, and everything is, I mean, how we go about our business is a reflection truly of your leadership, and, I mean, when I told my kids that you were retiring, they couldn't believe it, I mean, it's just, that is, I think, the presence that you have in our community and in our schools, and, I mean, my kids have been saying police chief's cheese since we moved here, because they were so little, they couldn't say it all that fast, so that's how you'll always be known to them, but I mean, I think it's just, you are exactly what I think we all want as far as our, our community policing goes, and it's just been awesome, and you're very much appreciated.
Thank you. And I will reiterate again, trust me, and I, and I wouldn't say this if I truly didn't deal this way. All have been part of the hiring, of course, during the final say, people hire at the minute, and they're a great top of the department. They will continue to do what we are doing today, at least temporary now, you're going to have a new interim chief that has been here even longer than I have, and understands, and knows what needs to be done, and is passing that along to everyone else that works in that department. It's been an absolute joy working with them, and I have nothing but one hundred percent faith in them, and I tell you that because your police department's not going to change. Thank you again for the opportunity that you have provided to me.
Now, I feel we should roast you or something.
Would you go have another race in back if you want?
Uh, no, 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 you know, I, I learned over the years, shot my balls off at times, and, and I paid the price for it.
You will be missed, Steve. And I'm going to say that I do have a lot of faith in Officer Bell, just our interim chief, I can tell you that, I, I don't think there's, I, I think there's nobody else finer than what he is, to, to take over for the time being, especially with the help he's got, and that's, that all goes back to you too, Steve. So, okay, any other questions on the police report? Otherwise, we can move on to community development?
Was there any continued discussion or any additional feedback on the 2019 pavement rehabilitation feasibility?
I actually have a question, so, help me understand, it's ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars for them to do the regular parking that they currently have in front of their buildings?
The total that we would recover for the parking in assessments is something around ten thousand dollars. One of those businesses with the parking and the road will have an assessment, I think just under fifteen thousand.
Okay, and then if they appeal it and we say, okay, fine, we're just going to do parallel parking, how much is that going to cost the city?
Well, depends, if you do both, it'd be around ten thousand dollars.
So there's really not a price difference, it's just a matter of how you're marking your lines?
No, it would cost the city ten thousand to cover what you would have recovered from them, if I understood your question correctly.
Gotcha, yep, okay.
Yeah, so what's the difference, what's the total cost in that between the perpendicular versus the parallel parking?
Oh, I, I actually didn't even compute the parallel parking, it's kind of the same cost as, would there be some additional, probably forty percent, four grand, something like that? Plus, because of the percentages, so, it'd be an additional four grand, I suppose, would be my best guess, to the city, to do parallel instead of...
That isn't going to have curbs and gutters, is it?
Nope, just, just blacktop and some paint that I was hoping Cory would put down for us, so that we didn't have to be a contract.
My daddy!
Supply the paint, the paintbrush.
One other engineering item, it's not a donation, Steve. So the engineering department too would like to express our appreciation for working with you all these years, wish you well in the future.
Thank you, and if you would be so kind to report back to them, then I have appreciated it, it's been a lot of fun working with you for...
I'd be happy. That's it?
Community development?
I just wanted to confirm that I did follow up on the letter you received regarding the Wegner's property letter that was presented at the last council meeting, there's no further follow-up needed on that at this time, and today the city received a concept development plan for a property located outside the city limits, the Aaron Lee property on the corner of Dakota and James, engineering firm has drafted a development plan that will start through the review and potential, potential annexation process.
Does that mean there was movement on prices and different things? Is that the one I'm thinking of, or?
Yes.
Yeah, so there was some...
The current owner is proposing to develop it into lots, so there would not, it would not involve a sale of the raw land at this point.
He has, he has indicated that he has at least one builder who's interested in purchasing the lots from you.
I'm proposing that a development review team meeting be held to provide feedback on December fourth, if all works out. Any other questions on community development items? Thank you.
Parks, any questions on the parks report?
With the open house, with the disc golf course?
Was that this past meeting?
Um, I don't know.
I kind of think it was.
Disc golf, I think that was.
Any idea what kind of turnout, or, any feedback, okay.
But Monday's set today, Mark was nobody.
Okay. Non-controversial item.
Well, they do have, they are going to have an eighteen-hole disc golf course in the township.
Right.
So.
Maybe if they don't stop that, too.
Well, no, they've already, that's already been in the books. Okay, moving on to other committee and board reports, Scale had their meeting, and we did not do our, it was Jordan's turn to do the community report, it wasn't ours, because of the funerals last month for the city of Jordan's father-in-law, so, she couldn't be there.
So we got deceded.
Yeah, so we got deceded. MVTA I did not make this month. I-35 Solutions?
I am so happy to report that the last meeting was canceled, and upon figuring that out, August was canceled, September was canceled, so October was the only one that I missed, so, I feel much better about myself, I only missed one meeting in the last four months.
So when was the last meeting you went to?
I've never gone to a meeting, because I was just appointed.
Only missed one.
They've canceled them because I couldn't make it, clearly.
Chamber of Commerce, any, any reports on that at all?
Tree lighting.
Yep, tree lighting.
Tree lighting's September first?
September first, yep.
September, yeah, September first.
September first.
Or December.
December, whichever one.
Why not start?
One of those months, you can light a tree in September one.
December first.
Is there a time on that show?
Five, I think.
I think it was five.
I think I saw five.
Regional council of mayors, I did not make that this month. CCEC?
I was in Mexico, but Mark was taking that one, unfortunately, we didn't have a forum, so there was no meeting.
Towntown Improvement Committee?
No real meeting, some good emails back and forth. Yeah, but, rather than giving a report, I'll wait till the next meeting to give a report, and give some people time to respond to emails if they see fit.
Fifty by thirty. They just had their big meeting, and RT Ryback spoke, and it was a lot of kumbaya type, and, but not really, I thought, much real progress, although they do have groups that are supposedly going to start on things, but whether or not...
It's only been, what, two, three years? It's only been, what, two, three years?
Is there any movement on the executive committee or whatever? Stop, I don't remember if it was officially being talked about, stop funding it or be funded by the counties, essentially an extension of the county's work? Or is there a point where we just say, we don't want to contribute? And we know we kind of talked about this, we don't want to completely pull off from scale, but use our money wisely. Don't use the, whatever it is, five, six thousand that the city pays to pay for something that's going to go nowhere. It's only two.
It's, it's not enough money from our city to really worry about this project per se, so it's just whether or not we participate and it does have a lot of positive possibilities, but as far as what it's actually doing and the actual accomplishments that they're claiming, a lot of them were naturally occurring anyway, and it was just kind of tagged on by 50 by 30. I mean, that's my personal opinion.
Mayor, you're closer to county folks than I probably am, but at least the ones I've talked to, and county commissioners. I mean, there's some pretty strong appetite to just be done with this and see it all go away. I don't know if you're in the same.
All you guys keep going to meetings. So at a certain point, can we stop showing up?
Well, I didn't, I didn't go to the last one.
Let's just say that it, county commissioners are one thing, but the new county administrator feels extremely strongly about this. In fact, she was one of those that proposed this in the beginning. So I have this feeling that it will continue for some time because the commissioners aren't going to cross her and to get rid of this.
As I mentioned before, I've been in multiple meetings. I have not been heavily engaged in 50 by 30, but the meetings I've been at where the topic has come up, there are concerns expressed about value, but to be honest, nobody's really stepped up to say, I think we should just stop it. And I'm not sure politically if people are prepared to do that. I can say though that with the appointment of the new director for it, Jake, he has made a concerted effort to try and move it from the information gathering stage into actual action plans. So I do think we're going to start seeing that shift over the next several months. So if the council's kind of on the fence, it might be worth giving it like six months to see if they actually start coming up with something productive at that point, if the council wants to take the lead on the rats leading the ship, so to speak.
I firmly believe that in the next six months, it will either start doing something or it will die a natural death because of lack of interest in actually doing something.
Because doing something is actually harder than just talking about it.
Well, they, they're, they have sort of tried to, I mean, the education committee has come up with their, with the brochure, the flyer for the screening and a few other things that have been really pretty good. But as far as it's just augmented what was already, the schools were already doing.
Right.
So we will see.
Personally, it's, it's just hard to really even buy into it. I, I, I've just, I've never really completely bought into the purpose, the cause, what's a, it always feels manufactured, but.
I can, I can say that I was exactly that way at the very first meeting and was reprimanded sort of by, by a certain county person because our city didn't provide enough money for scale to, and who the heck did I think I was, even though I was chair of scale at the time, to try to question their.
And I say in six months?
That's a big sales job as to why we should.
Well, but, so I think at a certain point, we stop bitching about it and actually do something.
And we've been talking this way for two years. And so at a certain point, six months, a month now, whatever it is, then we actually just stop going to these meetings and make it a point and start seeing if there is other support to actually get rid of it and move on so we can actually focus on things that actually end up with some sort of result.
Well, I think, I can honestly say that I think the service delivery committee is actually going to be talking about the future of scale and the direction of scale, and I think that is probably the right place to start this.
I agree 100%.
Because they will be starting, you know, that discussion will be held and whether or not 50 by 30 is.
I've heard discussions that 50 by 30 mean, is, it's becoming kind of its own thing. And I think quite honestly, the discussions that are going to be held with regards to future scale are going to be almost separate from the 50 by 30. They're talking more, what is scale going to do and be in the future? 50 by 30 has almost become its own separate entity, just like Ted, the Transportation Economic Development Committee did, where it was a brainchild out of the organization that got set up in this moving forward and has received some support. But I don't, I think this is really discussion, to be honest. It's got to be executive committee at scale, if it's really going to have any impact.
I really don't think you two are really saying different things.
No.
It's, you know, it factors into the function of scale and the argument to be redoing scale, but yes, they'll probably be tackled in separate means.
And that, that's, that's where I heard that this could come under the county, just like First Stop Shop did.
True.
And there's where I think it'll probably die its death because there's not going to be a lot of involvement and some, a lot of the citizen involvement that is involved right now with some people is actually paid.
So if you feel that way, Mayor, why, why are we still putting a conceited effort to go to the meetings when we could be concentrating on other council items instead of going to the meetings? If you feel that it's going to go and die anyways?
Well, that's, I've been, I went to the steering committee meetings basically to see what's going on and to see if they're making any progress. And I've attended some of the others and the only one that's, the one I attend, have attended that's probably gotten something done is the education group, but that was really pretty minor. So.
I mean, I haven't gone to meetings because I was, wasn't on most committees, but in two years I've sat here listening to you guys talk about nothing. I don't mean to be rude about it, but it's seriously, there's not, it doesn't seem to be anything going forward and.
But, you know, back that up, you know, Josh was part of the executive committee, steering committee, and, you know, made the conscious decision, look, I have other things that are out, that are more of a priority to do. I'm honestly kind of doing the same thing with housing and, you know, Bob, I, I don't know what you would say. So we kind of are doing that.
I've just went, the only thing I've been to lately is the steering committee because the rest, Jake has changed the direction, so it's not going to be these committees anymore. It's going to be different subgroups that are actually working on something. Now whether or not these subgroups actually do anything is the, is the real proof, and I really don't see much happening.
Well, I think we've wasted another substantial amount of time talking about it, so.
It's all right, as we do every meeting.
So, any discussion by council?
Want to do a jury?
No. No, we have to close meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Unless you want to just adjourn.
We could just adjourn.
Tom really doesn't need to.
So do you want to motion?
I'm just, I didn't see it on the agenda.
So you're looking for a motion to close the meeting for some of Minnesota statutes, 13D 2005, something within, something within three for the city council's performance evaluation of city administrator Tom Terry.
So moved.
Second.
Which is the first.
All in favor?
Aye.